Good evening. This is a regular city commission meeting for the City of Largo for Tuesday, October 6, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome you back to the city commission chambers here in Largo. It's good to be back in person. So you know, we are all sitting at least six feet apart. So we are social distancing and the folks that are out in the audience, a lot of them are wearing masks and they're also six feet apart. We're going to start today's meeting with an invocation given by Reverend Oliver King from Restoration Ministries of Largo. And then if you could please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, Lord God, we take this moment to say thank you for your many blessings that you've shown us each and every day. Lord, you've blessed our city, our community, our government, our country. We say thank you for your hand of protection on the many families that live in this city. We ask tonight for instruction and understanding in this meeting tonight. Help us to hear, to understand, and to learn from one another. We ask for your continued blessings on our government, our schools, our officials, our families, and everyone that make up this great city. Bless our homeless as well, God, those that are in need of help. Lastly, God bless our country, our president, and we all forever thank you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend. It's good to see you. Next, we'll, the first item is a ceremonial item, proclamation declaring Florida City Government Week.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes. Can't see you, but we can hear you.
Whereas city government is the government closest to most residents and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its community, and whereas municipal government provides services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, making their city their home, and whereas city government is administered for and by its residents and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities, and whereas Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity for elected officials and city team members to spread the word to all residents that they can shape and influence this branch of government, and whereas the National League of Cities and its member cities have joined together to engage a community through a variety of activities that encourage greater understanding, participation, and connections with municipal government, now therefore I Woody Brown Mayor of the City of Largo, Florida, and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim the week of October 19 through the 25th, 2020, as Florida City Government Week in the City of Largo in conjunction with the celebration of City Government Week in cities across the United States throughout the year and to complement the City of Largo's current civic engagement efforts such as resident advisory boards, youth leadership council, cross-sector partnerships, legislative advocacy, and public meetings.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Carey, the community engagement specialist here at the City of Largo. I am excited that the City of Largo is joining cities throughout the state in celebration of Florida City Government Week, October 19th through the 25th of 2020. Florida City Government Week is sponsored by the Florida League of Cities and is a week-long celebration held annually. The league is the official organization of municipal governments in Florida. Throughout the month of October, the City of Largo is planning the following activities. Advisory board members will be highlighted in the Largo Today, a weekly e-newsletter from Largo's city manager, Henry Schubert. On Thursday, October 22nd, at 7:00 PM, the city is hosting a virtual trivia night on Zoom. First prize is a four-pack of tickets to a million-dollar Christmas at the Central Park Performing Arts Center. To reach our younger audience, the city is partnering with a local elementary school to educate students on city services and ask students what they would do if they were mayor for a day. In late October, the city will share the students' responses on our city's Facebook page. The City of Largo is committed to fostering civic education in collaboration with residents throughout the Youth Leadership Council, Advisory, Advocacy, and Affiliate Boards, Largo Citizen Academy, Community Ambassadors, Speakers Bureau, Presentations, and more. We want to encourage all residents to stay connected. Visit largo.com/volunteer, largo.com/Connect, or email us at connect@largo.com for more information.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have citizens comment. If you'd like to talk about something that's on the consent or outside of the consent docket, please wait until the item comes up. Do we have any cards?
No cards. I have one public comment that came in on publiccomment@Largo.com, and this is from Donna McPherson. And she writes, "Due to a nationwide campaign by the American Library Association (ALA) to move to a fine-free approach to library borrowing, the Largo Library Administrator Casey Mcfee made a presentation about this program at the Largo Commission Workshop on September 8, 2020. There will be a vote on this issue in October by the Pinellas Public Library Cooperative, which includes 14 libraries in Pinellas County. Largo Library is a part of the PPLC. The Largo mayor and commissioners told her they support the idea to eliminate this fine income. Largo Library estimated fine income this year is $23,997, low per Casey Mcfee. Services were disrupted this year due to COVID-19, so using this low fee income as an average times 14 Pinellas Library is $335,958. That's a lot of money, and this is a low-fee year. Largo and all of the Pinellas libraries have lost income this year. Please, mayor and commissioners and the PPLC do not agree to this. The Pinellas libraries need this income. The fine income must be excess funds for Largo Library. I suggest that we use the excess funds to continue the support for the Bookmobile and the Housebound Program. Maybe there's a way for all the libraries to partner with the schools and create a program to cover some student fines." Administrator Casey Mcfee stated it was very hard on staff to collect fines from patrons. Is there a reason why this can't be turned into a teaching opportunity for paid staff and volunteers? This would enhance our customer service abilities and make them more confident employees. Help them and train them. Just because the ALA made this suggestion does not mean it is applicable to Pinellas County. Our Pinellas County libraries have many great programs in place to meet the needs of everyone. Pinellas County needs my estimate for a fine-free income of $335,958 to help fund the current programs and more. This fine income is not a hardship on the majority of people in this county. It is expected by most. The fine income is needed, and there are plenty of places where it can be used. Please give this the consideration it deserves. You are not just giving up income for Largo, which nearly everyone did at the September meeting. You are giving up income for the other 13 libraries in Pinellas County."
Thank you. I know that there's a couple avenues for public comment. Is there any other public comment online or otherwise?
I have none online and no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is approval of the agenda.
Move/approval, second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Next is approval of minutes from the regular meeting of September 15, 2020.
Move/approval, second.
Any changes or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Could I hear the consent docket, please?
Item four, authorization to purchase various automation products and services from Rexel Electric Supply in the estimated amount of $80,000. Item five, authorization to purchase pumps and repair services for flight products from Xylem Incorporated in the estimated amount of $150,000. Item six, authorization to purchase odor and corrosion control chemicals from Premier Magnesia LLC in the estimated amount of $300,000. Item seven, approval of change order number one for RFQ number 19-Q-666, consultant services for the Lift Station 2 Sub Basin 3 Inflow and Infiltration Engineering Evaluation Project to McKimmon Creed Incorporated in the amount of $93,197.50. Item eight, authorization for fiscal year 2021 spending for bid number 19-B-690, Pavement and Roadway Infrastructure Rehabilitation to Ajax Paving Industries of Florida LLC, Asphalt Paving Systems Incorporated, David Nelson Construction Company, Gator Grading and Paving LLC, and Preferred Materials Incorporated in the estimated amount of $1,284,500. Item nine, authorization for fiscal year 2021 spending for bid number 19-B-687, Miscellaneous Manhole Rehabilitation to Engineered Spray Solutions LLC, Hinterland Group Incorporated, IMR Development Corp. Doing Business as Jennings Pipe and Lining Services LLC, and Roland Incorporated in the estimated amount of $1,814,600. Item 10, award of option year one for bid number 19-B-644, Sanitary Sewer, Reclaim Water and Stormwater Repair to All American Concrete Incorporated, Gator Grading and Paving LLC, QRC Incorporated, and Roland Incorporated, and authorization for fiscal year 2021 spending in the estimated amount of $4,737,100. Item 11, approval of amendment to the Emergency Medical Services (ALS) First Responder Agreement. Item 12, authorization to purchase new fire rescue vehicles from 10-8 Fire Equipment Incorporated in accordance with Lake County Contract Number 14-0601, Florida Sheriff's Bid FSA 20-VEF14.01 and FSA 20-VEF14.02 in the amount of $2,394,686.80, and vehicle equipment in the estimated amount of $225,000. Item 13, authorization to purchase Microsoft Enterprise Licensing from CDWG as part of the Microsoft Migration Project in accordance with Sourcewell Contract Number 081419CDW in the amount of $570,486.60. Item 14, authorization to purchase computer equipment, peripherals, and related services from Dell Marketing LP in accordance with State Contract Number 43211500WSCA-15-ACS in the estimated amount of $530,000. Item 15, authorization to purchase library materials, including books, non-print materials, and related ancillary services from Baker &amp; Taylor Incorporated and Midwest Tape Incorporated in the estimated amount of $350,000 in accordance with Florida State Contract Number 550000000-20-NY-ACS. Item 16, approval of Coronavirus Relief Fund (CRF) sub-grantee agreement with Tampa Bay Community Development Corporation (CDC) in the amount of $458,580. Item 17, Pinellas Gateway/Mid County Area Master Plan Implementation Memorandum of Understanding. Item 18, award of RFP number 20-P-693, Largo Sports Complex Fence Replacement to Florida State Fence in the amount of $168,711.50.
You've heard the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent docket without commission discussion and including staff background provided in the commission packets.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
Good evening. This is a consideration of a proposed affordable housing project called the Avalon for submission to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation to be awarded low-income housing tax credits. The federal government allocates these tax credits on an annual basis to each state, and then each state decides how they want to make them available. The state of Florida uses a kind of a lottery system, and what you have here tonight is a discussion of a project on Seminole that would like to compete in the lottery and be awarded some of these credits. As part of the qualification to participate, each municipality, each locality, in this case Largo, has to basically demonstrate that there's local financial support. As we have in the past, we are recommending a commitment of $75,000 in state housing initiative partnership or SHIP funds that would be available from the city to meet that requirement if the project wins in the state lottery, and that'd be sometime next year.
Thank you. Do we have any public input on this?
I have no public input on this one.
Any questions from the commission? I did have one question. Do you know what the, our annual SHIP allocation is currently?
Well, this year, we're not getting an allocation, and it varies year to year. Some years, we've had some hundreds of thousands of dollars. So what it'll be next year, I couldn't tell you. That's going to be coming down from the state level.
So what would our contingency plan is if we're dedicating $75,000 of SHIP funds, and it comes in a year that we don't get SHIP funds?
Well, I think our belief is, is that there will be at least $75,000 available, otherwise we wouldn't make the recommendation. The developer had talked to us about a much higher commitment, and we said that because of exactly what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, we didn't think that that would probably be feasible. But we're willing, we believe that there'll be $75,000 available within the next year.
So we do get, I think it's called project income as well each year?
Yeah, we have project income. You know, there is money available now, so there will be $75,000 available.
Thank you. That was just my question on that. Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you. Bob, when it says here that the federal government's giving tax credit, what kind of tax credits?
Well, that's a credit against the federal tax liability that a developer would pay on a project.
Okay, so this is an infinitum then. Well, all right, that's federal. I don't want to get into that too deep. It says there's only one project per county?
Yeah.
How many, how many projects are pending right now, do we know?
Well, for us, just one.
Just one?
I can't say.
In the county, we have any, any feedback on that?
I do not know. I think there's at least one of, for Pinellas County, but more than that, I don't know.
Okay. Last question.
There's usually a number.
What is this $75,000 for? It's requesting a commitment of $75,000 from SHIP funds for?
Well, it would be used to, according to the requirements of SHIP. It would be used to defer construction costs or some other cost associated with the project.
$75,000 on a 96-unit facility, that's a rounding error.
Well.
I mean, this would be a multimillion-dollar project. By the way, I thought we called this workforce housing.
Yeah, we could call it workforce housing. The developer is looking to see if they can get penny-four funds as well. I mean, they're looking at other funding sources. They're putting together a package, and we're only probably a small part of that package.
I would say so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
In the memo, it says that there's a letter attached of intent from the developer and a concept map. I did not see that in here. Did I miss that?
I thought, our understanding was, is that both of those things were attached somewhere at the end of the agenda.
Is it at the very bottom? Okay.
It's not on the electronic version. I don't know if you all had an annual hard copy. I didn't, I didn't see it either. There was actually a couple of, it's not on the hard copy.
We do have those available, so I don't know what I can do here. I don't think we can use the camera.
Is it possible you can get it to us within a couple days?
Yes, we'll certainly do that.
I'd like to take a look at it. This is kind of in my area, so I'm fascinated by it. Also, you said 96 units. What is considered affordable? What is the cost of affordable?
Well, affordable can be all the way up to 120% of the, you know, average median income for the area. I'm not sure exactly how this project would stack out. Yeah.
Could you include that in the concept?
Yeah, we'll certainly do that.
And the last question I have is, in kind of what Commissioner Holmes was asking, is the lottery slot. How many currently have applied in, you said one, but how many have, in the state have applied already?
I don't know.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I had one more question, kind of along those lines. I know that we've, over the years, had several of these come in front of us. Do you recall ever one, is there one in recent years that has, has made, has won the lottery here in Largo?
I don't believe the city has ever had a project that's won the lottery. We've had a couple of projects, one on 16th and the one up on Clearwater Largo Road, I think it's called Bayside Courts, or used to be called that, that actually went through the process and ended up getting funds through the county of a different type.
Okay.
So if they don't win the lottery, that doesn't necessarily mean that they won't find another funding source and get constructed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Smith.
Time back, you said that the county, they're looking at penny-four. How heavily, if this doesn't win the lottery, since this is something where it's kind of, we've been talking about affordable housing in Largo a little bit, workforce housing, how hard are they going to be trying to push for funding from them?
I don't know.
Okay.
They've told us they're looking at penny-four, and that's...
And have we reached out? Because that's a mobile home area that's right behind that area. Have they, did they know that this is what we're looking at, or it's being conceived possibly?
We haven't gone through the full site plan review process yet. At that point, we would definitely be involving all the neighbors.
Okay. And one last thing is, because the concept line is that, how is there, I'm always, traffic is my issue right there. Is there kind of, because that's like right in an entrance that goes back into the Home Depot and the Publix in that area. How are they going to be exiting on opposite is a apartment complex? How, I know a lot of people have to go up and do a UE and stuff like that up at Armerton.
That's one of the issues we would look at if it goes through site plan review.
Okay.
I mean, we've discussed the concept with them, and at least in terms of the concept, the access points are arranged so that they don't conflict with the neighbors or, you know, development across the street.
Okay.
But this is, again, this is just a concept we've talked to them about, and you'll see it when we send it to you.
All right. I'd like, I look forward to seeing that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to commit $75,000 in SHIP funds to support the submission of the Avalon Project to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation for fiscal year 2020 low-income housing tax credit.
Second. Have a motion and a second. I do believe I asked for public comment, but I'm not certain if I did.
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Just in case. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Next is item number 20.
I'm going to have to hit my spacebar to talk.
Good evening. I was asking if I could just de-mask for my moment here, so, but go lightning, mind lightning.
Oh, nice.
I am so pleased to come before you this evening and bring the PBA supervisory agreement. In a record two meetings, we agreed on a full contract that part of the catalyst was the PBA rank-and-file agreement, the officers and the sergeants. We've needed to accommodate significant market increases in officer pay and sergeant pay, so therefore our lieutenants needed to be properly placed so we would have a logical progression of pay for the ranks that came after sergeant, of course, which is lieutenant. And so we did that with the ranges, and we suspended the benchmarks for the first year, and we are placing them commensurate with where they are percentage-wise in their current range on the new range. And then, again, reinstate those benchmarks, again, to remain competitive with our fellow departments in, with Clearwater primarily, St. Pete, and definitely the sheriff's office as well. And so we pick up our benchmarks in the second and third year of the agreement. Additionally, we made some improvements that allow us to be consistent with the Enterprise Resource Program citywide that is reflected in our vacation, some of our provisions in the vacation section and sick leave sections. We also did institute a percentage which also assists us in the ERP for shift differential, which will be 5% for afternoons and 7% for midnights, which, again, puts us more in sync with our surrounding agencies. Lastly, we implemented a TAC incentive of 2% for the commander and assistant commander of SWAT or TAC, which is something we needed to do to recognize the level of commitment those individuals have with our organization. I would be remiss if I did not introduce our PBA bargaining team. They're with us tonight. We have Sasha Lone, who is the executive director of the Suncoast PBA with us. We have Paul Amadeo, who represented the group at the table. Additionally, we have Scott Gore and Ann Starling here, all lieutenants with us in support of this agreement. The executive team consisted of Jeff Undestead, Matt DeFiore, and myself. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this?
I have none.
And any questions or comments from the commission?
I move to ratify the collective bargaining agreement with the Suncoast Police Benevolent Association Supervisory Unit for a three-year term beginning October 6, 2020 through September 30, 2023.
Second. I am going to make a comment. Thank you for everybody that worked on this, and it's so, it's so nice when we know that it happened in two meetings, and everybody's kind of on the same page and happy, and made some important moves for the, for the whole organization. So thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Next is item number 21.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. I have the agreement for the City of Largo to apply for COVID-19 FEMA funding through the Florida Division of Emergency Management, and what our resolution here is for is to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. Right now, it's still a zero-dollar value agreement. What happens, and what has happened in the past, is we will typically get amendments to the agreement. So this, this allows for that process to be sped up and gives the city manager the authority to sign them. So far, we've incurred about $211,000 in potentially eligible expenditures for this. We've also been tracking separately and meeting within groups within the city of dividing up the Department of Justice grants available versus the FEMA grants versus the CRF funds, so we're not tracking anything at the same level. Some available for any questions? This is the same agreement that we have signed in the past for Hurricane Irma. Looking forward to any questions you have.
Resolution number 2280, a resolution of the City of Largo, Florida, delegating to the city manager of the City of Largo the authority to legally bind the City of Largo for the sole purpose of requesting federal reimbursement concerning assistance for their recovery from COVID-19 by entering into a federally funded subaward grant agreement and subsequent grant agreement amendments with the Florida Division of Emergency Management without further authorization from the commission, up to a maximum aggregate amount of $500,000, directing the city attorney to review the same, repealing all resolutions in conflict and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this?
I have none.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to approve resolution number 2280.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you.
Going to keep you busy.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. This item is a first reading of ordinance 2021-01 to amend Chapter 16, Section 16-40 of the City of Largo Codex Ordinances to establish 25 mph maximum speed limit zones in the LDRO neighborhood. Following a new speed limit reduction process, a citizen may request a reduced speed limit for residential street or neighborhood. Street-specific speed studies are not required to be Street-specific speed studies are not required to be conducted as the previously conducted citywide speed study confirmed initial eligibility for consideration. Once the roadway limits for the reduced speed limit request have been determined, a citizen-led petition for written approval from 60% of the affected property owners is required. Per this process, the Eldoro neighborhood located east of Belcher Road is the first area to achieve the required petitioning and are eligible for a proposed ordinance to reduce the speed limits within their neighborhood to 25 mph. The eligible streets are shown in yellow on the map. Per Florida statutes, the new speed limit is required to be posted. Since this neighborhood is isolated, only one 25 mph speed limit sign is proposed at the entrance to the neighborhood on Eldoro Drive. Staff plans to provide notification to residents via mailing in addition to placing a temporary message board ahead of permanent signage. We would also like to provide you with an update on the status of all other active speed limit reduction requests. We currently have two other areas that are in the petition phase. The Brookside neighborhood located off, excuse me, off of Belcher Road, which currently has achieved 43% of the required vote, as well as the Harbor Lake Drive area, including Overlook Road and Mitchell Drive, located off the Indian Rocks Road, which currently has 48% of the required vote. Additionally, Ridge Road Southwest between 8th Avenue Southwest and West Bay Drive has recently obtained the required votes in the petition phase and now is eligible to move forward in the speed limit reduction process. This roadway will be included in the next quarterly speed limit reduction ordinance approval request. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Ordnance number 2021-01, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending Chapter 16, Section 16-40 of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances to establish 25 mph maximum speed limit zones, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any public input on this?
I have none.
Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Holmes.
I'm very familiar with this neighborhood, and my first question is, what's the speed limit now?
30.
30. See, if, if I was going to have the speed reduced in that neighborhood, I would have gone for 15 or 20. But the other side of the coin, so you reduce this thing, who's going to enforce it? I mean, that's, that's a closed-off neighborhood. There's only one ingress egress there, and those are actually pretty short streets. So obviously, there is a problem there, but, so we can reduce the speed limit, but who's going to enforce that? I don't, I don't know if Largo patrols that neighborhood. I mean, unless someone, someone calls, but I mean, there was a couple of people who are regulars for the Largo Police Department, but they, they no longer live there.
As far as your second question, I would have to defer to the police department. As far as your first question, whether or not we could have gone to 15 to 20 mph, we would have had to do an individual speed study. The citywide speed study that we did showed that we could reduce the roadways to 25 miles, 25 mph road only, without having to do individual speed studies.
I still want to know how we're going to enforce that, because I don't believe the police department patrols in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
First is more a comment. I congratulate the Eldoro neighborhood. This is something, you know, I supported at the beginning, and I congratulate them for wanting to do this and protect their community. I would like to know if we can keep tabs a little bit on citizens' comments, or residents in that area's comments, to their feel of, once this is put in, their positive or negative views, kind of tied into Commissioner Holmes' views of if they think it should go lower or something like that. I'd like to keep in tabs of that a little bit and let them know that we do care about the, you know, the people who walk and, and their children walking in that area. So if we can just keep them in the, keep us in the loop with them, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I had a question, kind of something I needed to point out. So it may be an error, trying to find it here. In the ordinance, it has a list of all the city streets in the City of Largo that are not 30 mph, because if, if they're not on this list, they're by de facto 30 mph. One of the streets that's on the 35 mph list is, is Alternate Keene Road from East Beta McMullen Road, and that is posted at 25 mph. So I guess my question is, is it, is it posted? And you may not have the answer to this, but I just wanted to point it out, that it is posted at 25 mph, and it has been for several years. And in the ordinance, it says 35, so maybe it's just in the wrong slot.
Yes, and we actually have a few other roadways that are posted 25 mph that aren't in for ordinance, so that is something at one point we will bring back to make sure that the tables are correct.
Correct it? Okay, because I doubt, if the ordinance says that it's 35 mph and somebody gets pulled over for going 35 into 25, we'd probably have a challenge, or they would have a challenge. I don't know. The attorney's not nodding one way or the other, but that'd be my guess. The other question that I had was...
You didn't know until you told them.
You might look it up, if they had a smart attorney.
Sorry. I apologize.
No comments. Thanks. The other, the other kind of question, I happen to live on Ridge Road Southwest, other than, other than signing one of these petitions, I didn't really, I wasn't involved in the, in the, the resident started petition to change, although I'm fully in support of, of it because we have a speeding problem on our road. Not that I think this is going to solve all those problems, but it's a step in the right direction. However, I got an email forwarded from one of my neighbors, because if you signed the petition, she collected emails for the people that, that were in favor of it. So she sent an update out, I think earlier this week, and it said that, that you mentioned the quarterly ordinance, and it mentioned that this ordinance is going to come before the commission in January sometime, so I would think that the change wouldn't happen on the street until February or March of next year. I don't know how much work is, is necessary on the staff side, but as, I think the commission could handle another ordinance more frequently than, than once a quarter. So if it, if it doesn't make much difference to the staff, while these are trickling in once every now and then, like they are right now, I think we, I think it would make sense to bring them to the commission as soon as possible. And this is my street, so, so, but I think moving forward, same, same thing. I know that the process is long. Eldoro and Ridge Road started their process when we talked about it a year and a half ago, or however long ago, it feels like a year and a half. When we, when we passed the ordinance, the original ordinance or talked about the speed study, that's when they started getting petitions. Hasn't been real easy to get petitions since March, right? So, because nobody answers the door, and, you know. So, so it's been a long, long process, so if we can make it quicker for, for the folks that have done all the work out there, I think, I think that would be a step in the right direction. I don't know if the rest of the commission feels the same way. All right. So, and I don't know, like I said, I don't know what type of staff. If you guys come back next, next meeting and say, it's going to take us too long to put this together, it's going to be a little while, then I understand that, but I think we should make it quicker if we can. Any other questions on the Eldoro?
I move to approve ordinance number 2021-01 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on November 3, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. I'd also like to say that, that my neighbors say that it's been really, the staff that they've been working with have been very helpful and, and done a great job, so they're really happy with that, too. So, and I haven't even met the neighbors in person.
Push out the wow to them.
What's that?
The wow.
Yeah, I'll put a wow.
Yeah.
So next up, Mr. Zimmert, do you have anything this evening?
I don't have anything today.
Commissioner Smith.
I just sidetracked. Reverend, Reverend K, you're here. Is it possible I can ask him to come up and talk just a smidge real quick? What you do for the community with homelessness and stuff like that that's in our area right now with your church? If you could maybe just mention a few things that you all... I really appreciate you coming out and witnessing.
No problem at all. Thank you guys for the opportunity. It's always a pleasure to come in and to pray with you guys and do the invocation. Yes, our food pantry is open every Tuesday from 10 to 1. We've been open the entire time throughout the pandemic. Last month, we did about 600 bags. We partner with Feed America and RCS. We're located at 10888 126th Avenue North. Not only do we hand out bags of food, but we go over to Tent City as well and provide toiletry items to Tent City, also food there. We go to a few homeless shelters in Clearwater. Everybody's tabernacle. We go to Pacifica, you know, around Christmas time to pass out, you know, Christmas gifts. But with our food pantry, we're always looking for donations, monetary or either items that, those that want to drop off, you know, to the church. But we've, you know, make sure that we give them a good, you know, hefty bag of food. There's no, no limit, you know, whenever they need it, and some may, you know, come not only on, on Tuesdays to pick up food, but whenever they need, you know, we're there for service, they, they come in and we provide the bags. So, and we serve not only just the Largo area, but, you know, wherever they live, whoever needs food, you know, is open, you know, to anyone that needs it. And those are families. Doesn't matter how many in the family, but we make sure that everyone is taken care of. And so, again, that's, that's every single Tuesday, you know, for the City of Largo. We're about, only about 10 minutes away from here. And so every, every Tuesday, we have a line that's waiting. Of course, our numbers are going up now because of, of the pandemic, but, you know, we, we made a commitment that we will be there and help, you know, with this, you know, with the situation. And when we go to Tent City, that's the homeless project where, you know, that's toiletry items, just making sure they have what they need on the streets or, you know, where they're at, you know, at that, at that shelter at that time.
I'm sorry, what was the address of?
It's 10888 126th Avenue North.
Thank you.
And so Mondays, we are there setting up the bags. We travel over to Feed America to pick up everything, RCS. We put the bags together, you know, that Monday morning from about 10 to about 2:30, 3:00, and then we open on Tuesday where we provide the bags, you know, for the families.
Someone wants to make a donation, do they just bring it there?
Yeah, they can bring it there.
Anytime, day or night?
Yeah. They can bring it there, or either, they, I can provide the phone number for you guys if you want to, if anyone listens, it's 727-692-5763. And they can give me a call at that number, and I will have someone out there to, you know, to pick up the donation.
And what don't you take?
Right now, we, we take pretty much everything. You know, we take the clothing as well, again, the non-perishable items, just, you know, whatever, you know, people want to, you know, donate to them. I mean, because they're homeless, they needed it at Tent City. Now with Tent City right now, you know, they've closed down, they're not allowing people to go in, but we have a, have a storage, you know, right now, we're trying to look for a building for our pantry to expand. But right now, we just, you know, store, you know, the clothing in the, in the pantry. So right now, we definitely need the, you know, the non-perishable items, and we, you know, we kind of handle the rest. So as long as they give me a call and let me know what they have, you know, we can work it out to get it to...
What about electronics?
Electronics? No, we don't. We've never received electronics. You know, that will be, you know, something different, but if, you know, someone wants to donate that, you know, we could always, you know, put it out there. We, we did, a week before school, we did backpacks for families, gave out about 200 backpacks to families that needed it, you know, and needed school supplies as well. So, you know, we did that as well, so we had those that donated, and we just held on to them until, to that proper time.
Very good. Thank you.
Can we find you on social media or anything, anywhere else?
Yes, you can find me on, on social media, Oliver King. I think I got a few of you on there, Oliver King, and also Restoration Ministries of Largo.
Great.
You can find me.
Thank you.
Reverend, one last thing is, I'll, I'll shoot you information, and I'd like to get your information for Gloria, our assistant, so we can maybe get it out to the other commissioners and some staff people that I know that would be very interested in assisting you and helping you out.
Good.
And anyway, we can help. I thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then also those that want to make donations, we, you know, we, you know, have our 501(c)(3), so those that want to give and maybe do a tax write-off for it, more than welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for this time.
Thank you for asking the reverend to come up, Commissioner Smith. It's a good idea.
Thank you. My pleasure. And the last thing is just, thanks staff and our PBA reps for a good contract, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Finkerson.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes.
Nice being back in the palatial surroundings of City Hall. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson.
Yes, sir. So, yeah, I was trying to figure out how to turn on my mute, turn off my mute button over here, but I guess it just works all the time now. So anyhow, I was wondering if, Henry, if we could send the clip of the proclamation for Florida Government Week to the Florida League of Cities, as well as the Suncoast League of Cities, and then maybe a list of the events and some of the things that we're going to be doing for that week? Can we send those out? I know we'll be promoting them on our own social media, but maybe, you know, have a little bit of help from them as well would be great. Thank you, sir. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Holt.
Just, it's great to see everybody's smiling faces and a little bit of normalcy, little baby steps, but it's great to see everybody, and thank you, staff, as always, for everything that you guys have done through thick and thin of this last five, six, seven, I don't even know what month we're in anymore.
It's been 112 years.
And rest in peace, Mr. Eddie Van Halen. That was just a cherry on the top of the cake for this week, I guess, even though it's only Tuesday, but fought a tough battle and gave me a lot of memories back in the 80s, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything this evening. Mr. Schubert.
No, nothing to say.
All right. If there's any action...
Wait, one more thing. I want to thank my niece for making all of us these lovely masks, so that when we're incognito behind our masks, people know who we are. We're not incognito anymore because she has all of our names on them and the City of Largo, so thank you, Savannah, for these masks.
Put them on, so she can see everybody.
Thank you. And are there any action items?
Thank you.
Yes, I had three things. Request by Commissioner Smith that the commission be sent a copy of the concept plan for item 19, the Avalon Project. A request by Commissioner Smith that staff track the Eldoro residents' comments on the reduced speed limit. And then a request by Commissioner Robinson that staff send a clip of the presentation for resolution number 2280 to the Florida League of Cities, Suncoast League of Cities, along with a list of the events.
There was one more. I also asked about how's the police department going to enforce the speed limit in Eldoro.
With radar gun.
Same way they do the 30 mph speed limit.
Is that like Ridge Road?
All right. They put a lot of tickets on Ridge Road, I'm sure.